Good evening. We like to start a North Charleston City Council, City Hall Council meeting for November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I mean, we all rise for the invitation that will be said by Councilman, Councilwoman, Charmaine Palmer Roberts, doctor, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
If all hearts and minds are clear, Father God, we thank you for another day to come together in unity, God, to lead your city. Thank you for all those that are assembled here. Let us have a productive meeting. Let us also remember those who cannot be in attendance. Bless those, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Before we get started, it was Veterans Day, and I'd like any veterans in the house to stand. Thank you for your service.
We'll have the new employees. When I call your name, please come to the front. Executive Department, Karen Thrower; Police, Daquan Brown; Devon Itchner; Jeremy Coase; Jalen Manigot; Juan Monsla; Howard Thomas; Facilities, William Wright; Fire, Ms. Abernathy; Public Works, Jomaine Blake; Recreation, Robert Kruger; and Denzel Myers.
Say welcome to the city of North Charleston, and I know first day on employment, some of you guys look like you've been here before, but welcome also. If you turn around, that is a council member and the mayor. It's good to know them come budget time. And, but these folks out here, these are one of the greatest people you can become acquainted with, and that is the folks you're gonna be working for, that's constituents for the city, and also the folks who comes through the city. I think you're probably looking at on a day's basis, they said roughly it's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people tour within the city. So, no, we don't sell anything, the most thing we do is give service, and that's what I think we're expecting from each one of you guys, and I know that's what you would be expecting from anyone also. So I say thank you, welcome to City of North Charleston, and I know that the mayor have something to, we would like to say to you guys also.
Just welcome aboard, just like Councilman Brown stated, when you look at the citizens out there, that's your number-one priority, number-one priority, to take care of them. You may not always get it right, but at least try to do right by them. God bless you, and if you don't want to, you don't have to stay, but if you can, if you want to, you can, but do whatever you want to do, but God bless you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Our first item on the agenda is a request to approve the City Council minutes from the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five City Council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Jerome.
Aye.
Dr. Gannaway Paisley.
Aye.
Dr. Palmer Roberts.
Aye.
Mr. MD.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Skipper.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Burgess.
Aye.
We have the final reading of an ordinance authorizing the approval of a short-term parking lease with the bowling company for a minimum of thirty-six thousand a month.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Jerome.
Aye.
Dr. Gannaway Paisley.
Aye.
Dr. Palmer Roberts.
Aye.
Mr. MD.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Skipper.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Burgess.
Aye.
We have the final reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor or his need to execute a termination of revision, reversion of property in the limited warranty deed for the parcel of land known as the former Shakora Elementary School, Charleston County TMS number four-six-nine-one-two, parcel one fifteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Jerome.
Aye.
Dr. Gannaway Paisley.
Aye.
Dr. Palmer Roberts.
Aye.
Mr. MD.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Skipper.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Burgess.
Aye.
We have the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property addressed at sixteen-twenty-nine Sumner Avenue, Charleston County TMS number four-seven-one-zero-one, parcel eight, from R-one single-family residential to R-two multifamily residential in Council District Eight.
Good evening, mayor and council. First rezoning on the agenda is a request to rezone sixteen-twenty-nine Sumner Avenue from R-one single-family residential to R-two multifamily residential. This property is located in Council District Eight. You can see the property here, highlighted in the blue outline, sorry, right there. Currently, the property is being used as a single-family home. As you can see by the zoning map, the property is currently zoned R-one, and all adjacent zoning is currently R-one as well. Subject property is designated traditional neighborhood development. R-two zoning would be consistent with this designation, which is applied to areas of the city to provide for and/or sustain higher-density neighborhoods with smaller lots and a mix of housing types. The principal use for this designation is mixed residential, typical of urban neighborhoods, including single-family residential development on smaller lots, attached residential structures such as duplexes and townhomes, and small-scale multifamily development. You can see the, the green here denotes that traditional neighborhood development. Subject property seen here in the photo, you can see the single-family residential, single-family houses that currently exist, and these are adjacent properties. It's, the property is located in the Charleston Farms neighborhood, which is situated along Remount Road and north of Interstate five-twenty-six. The area is developed with a mix of single and multifamily residential uses. Staff's recommendation is approval, given that, given support from the comprehensive plan and the residential character of the neighborhood, staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning of the property from R-one single-family residential to R-two multifamily residential. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of the rezoning at their October thirteenth meeting, four to one.
Okay, without objection, this item will be referred to the Public Safety Committee for further review and consideration.
Our next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the properties addressed as twenty-one fifty-six Midland Park Road, Charleston County TMS number four-seven-eight-one-six, parcel sixty-four, from O-N Neighborhood Office to B-one Limited Business in Council District Two.
The proposed rezoning of the property at twenty-one fifty-six Midland Park, from O-N to B-one Limited Business, you can see the property here on Midland Park Road, just off of Rivers Avenue to the east. Property is currently zoned O-N and is developed with a commercial building on the property. Zoning adjacent is mostly R-one, some O-N, as well as M-one here. The subject property is designated mixed-use, which establishes a mixture of commercial and residential land uses located within close proximity to one another. Appropriate uses include offices, retail, multifamily, and light industrial. Seen the photos, the subject property is currently developed with a two-story office building, seen here and here. The area is developed with a mix of residential zoning as well as some commercial zoning. Mixed-use designation supports a mixture of commercial and residential land uses located within close proximity to one another. Appropriate uses include offices, retail, multifamily, and light industrial. Seen the photos, the subject property is currently developed with a two-story office building, seen here and here. The area is developed with a mix of residential zoning as well as some commercial zoning. Mixed-use designation supports a mixture of commercial and residential land uses within the close proximity. The existing neighborhood office zoning allows for businesses and professional offices. Staff believes the existing neighborhood office zoning is appropriate due to the parcels' location. Accordingly, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the property from O-N Neighborhood Office to B-one Limited Business. The Planning Commission, at their October thirteenth meeting, also recommended approval to City Council unanimously.
Without objections, this item will be referred to the Public Safety Committee for further review and consideration.
Our next item is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the properties addressed at fifty-five twenty-three and fifty-five twenty-five Addaway Street, Charleston County TMS numbers four-seven-three-one-four, parcel eighty-one and parcel eighty, from R-two single-family residential to B-one limited business in Council District Eight.
This proposed rezoning is here, same general vicinity as the last two. Properties are highlighted in a blue here outline. The current zoning of these properties is R-two, they are requesting B-one limited business. You can see the yellow, darker yellow or orange is the R-two zoning, lighter yellow is R-one, this blue here is B-one zoning that currently exists in the neighborhood. Subject properties are also designated traditional neighborhood development. This applies to the Charleston Farms neighborhood, which is where this, these properties are located. There's a mix of housing types that are supported, single-family residential on smaller lots, attached residential structures, duplexes, townhomes, and small-scale multifamily development. Subject parcels are two cleared vacant lots, see here in the photos, and the subject properties are surrounded by R-one, as you saw on the zoning map before, to the north and west, east across Addaway Street, and B-one to the south. The area is developed with a mix of residential uses and some limited business zoning. Given the subject property's location and proximity to surrounding residential uses and the lack of support from the comprehensive plan, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the properties from R-two multifamily residential to B-one limited business. The Planning Commission, at their October thirteenth meeting, also recommended denial unanimously.
Okay, without objection, this item will be referred to the Public Safety Committee for further review and consideration.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the properties addressed at twenty-one fifty-six Midland Park Road, Charleston County TMS number four-seven-eight-one-six, parcel sixty-four, from O-N Neighborhood Office to B-one Limited Business in Council District Two.
The proposed rezoning of the property at twenty-one fifty-six Midland Park, from O-N to B-one Limited Business, you can see the property here on Midland Park Road, just off of Rivers Avenue to the east. Property is currently zoned O-N and is developed with a commercial building on the property. Zoning adjacent is mostly R-one, some O-N, as well as M-one here. The subject property is designated mixed-use, which establishes a mixture of commercial and residential land uses located within close proximity to one another. Appropriate uses include offices, retail, multifamily, and light industrial. Seen the photos, the subject property is currently developed with a two-story office building, seen here and here. The area is developed with a mix of residential zoning as well as some commercial zoning. Mixed-use designation supports a mixture of commercial and residential land uses within close proximity. The existing neighborhood office zoning allows for businesses and professional offices. Staff believes the existing neighborhood office zoning is appropriate due to the parcels' location. Accordingly, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the property from O-N Neighborhood Office to B-one Limited Business. The Planning Commission also recommended denial at their October thirteenth meeting, three to two.
Without objection, this item will be referred to the Public Safety Committee for further review and consideration.
Next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning properties addressed at eleven-sixty-one, eleven-sixty-five, and eleven-eighty-one Wright Street, Charleston County TMS numbers four-seven-one-zero-three, parcel forty-three, parcel thirty-eight, and parcel thirty-seven, from M-one light industrial to R-two multifamily residential in Council District Ten.
The requested rezoning, as stated here, are these three parcels off of Wright Street, just to the east here of Rhett. You can see the properties highlighted in blue. Currently, they are vacant wooded lots that are zoned M-one light industrial. See the M-one zoning in the light purple, M-two is heavy industrial, and there is some surrounding R-one zoning and B-two on North Rhett. Subject properties are designated as traditional neighborhood development, partially within the mixed-use corridor of North Rhett Avenue. The mixed-use corridor supports a mixture of commercial and residential uses located within close proximity to one another. Traditional neighborhood development is applied to areas of the city to sustain higher-density neighborhoods with smaller lots and a mix of housing types. It provides support for attached residential structures such as duplexes and townhomes and small-scale multifamily development. The mixed-use corridor is denoted by the hatch here, and it applies to all of O-three-seven and part of O-four-three. Subject properties can be seen here as wooded lots in the photos. Properties are surrounded by some R-one zoning to the east and north, across Wright Street, M-one to the east, B-one to the west, and R-two to the south. Given the subject property's location, the proximity of other residential uses, and support from the comprehensive plan, staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning of the property from M-one light industrial to R-two multifamily residential. Planning Commission, at their October thirteenth meeting, also recommended approval of the proposed rezoning, four to one.
Without objection, this item will be referred to the Public Safety Committee for further review and consideration.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property addressed at twenty-seven thirty-seven Dansler Drive, Charleston County TMS number four-eight-six-zero-six, parcel sixteen, from R-one single-family residential to O-N Neighborhood Office in Council District Three.
The requested rezoning is from R-one to O-one Neighborhood Office. Subject property is located here at the curve of Dansler Drive, just around the bend. It's currently a cleared vacant lot. As you can see here with the zoning, you can, property zoned R-one, noted by the light yellow. O-N is directly adjacent on Dansler Drive. The subject property is designated as suburban residential, which is applied to areas of the city where the city intends to sustain lower-density neighborhoods. The principal use of land within these designated areas is low-density, single-family residential development with large yards and open space. See here, that light tan, it's just outside of the mixed-use corridor of University Boulevard. Subject property is currently a cleared vacant lot, as you can see here in the photos, and the area is developed with single-family residential uses along with some commercial uses along University Boulevard and Dansler Drive. The future land use designation for this parcel is suburban residential, which does not support the requested rezoning. Given the lack of support of the comprehensive plan and the residential character of Dansler Drive, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the property from R-one single-family residential to O-N Neighborhood Office. The Planning Commission, at their October thirteenth meeting, also recommended denial unanimously.
Without objection, this item will be referred to the Public Safety Committee for further review and consideration.
So, the next item on the agenda is a text amendment. It's an ordinance to amend sections three, two, five, oh, sorry. That's not?
Yeah. That was a test.
Okay.
Thank you, buddy.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
We have five speakers tonight. When I call your name, please come to the front. State your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Timothy Potter.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Timothy Potter, and I'm here for the second time because my family and I have been failed by the very department that swore to protect us. On October eleventh, on our quiet cul-de-sac, became a scene of chaos. Several criminals came to our neighborhood and recklessly fired their weapons, damaging my car and my home. My wife, my four-year-old son, and I were terrified. Since that night, we've lived with the constant fear that those dangerous men might return. But what made things worse is not just the violence, it's the response from our police department. From the beginning, the investigation has been handled with negligence. Reports were incomplete, detectives were slow to follow up, promises made by the chief of police have gone unfulfilled. From the, at one point, I was even told by an officer not to paint a target on my back to avoid retaliation against my home. But in the same conversation, I was told to go door-to-door myself, to ask my neighbors, excuse me, to ask my neighbors for evidence and video of the incident. Why should I, a taxpayer, a victim of gunfire, do the investigative work that trained, salaried officers are supposed to handle? Then, on October twenty-seventh, I received another blow, a phone call from the detective saying the case was being closed due to inadequate information, the same detectives that haven't yet come to meet with me. Yet, just the next evening, at a police town hall meeting at Royal Baptist Church, we were told the case was still active. Which is it? Who's being honest with the citizens of this city? My family doesn't feel safe. We don't feel heard, and we certainly don't feel protected. I'm standing here tonight because I refuse to let my family's safety be demised by poor communication, lack of accountability, and empty promises. I ask this council and the mayor to ensure what happened to us and how it's been handled is reviewed seriously. We need transparency, professionalism, and genuine action from our police department. Because at the end of the day, my family deserves to live without fear, just like every other family in North Charleston. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Roger Gilliard.
Afternoon, Kings and Queens. Ladies and gentlemen, extend members of North Charleston City Council, fellow citizens. Today I stand before you to address a matter that is not just vital, but foundational to our shared values and the very fabric of our community. The importance of integrity and the unwavering need to uphold our bylaws and the laws of the state of South Carolina. And the ever-reward respect for our law seems increasingly tenuous. We must confront insidious forces of racism, nepotism, that threatens to undermine our moral values and dismantle the trust that binds us as a community. Integrity is more than just a word, it's a commitment. A commitment not just to the law, but to one another as individuals who share this space and its life. It demands accountability and transparency, a refusal to allow personal biases, connections, or prejudices to dictate the enforcement of justice. Our bylaws and state laws are designed to protect every citizen, to ensure fairness, and to foster a community where everyone feels safe and respected. When those tasked with upholding these laws turn a blind eye to injustice or allow the skills of justice to tip based on the color of someone's skin, we all suffer. It is deeply concerning when those who apply the law display a blatant disrespect for it. How can we expect our citizens to uphold the laws when they see that it does not apply equally to all? The erosion of truth in our enforcement of laws is not merely a legal issue, it is a moral crisis. Consider, if you will, a scenario that would easily happen to anyone here. Imagine your son or your daughter who find themselves in a defensive position trying to fend off a vicious attack from someone wielding a steel pipe. They've been assaulted repeatedly, whipped and bitered, and their torso and head while being choked unconscious. Yet after the chaos, they're called back to the scene of the accident after being struck by a semi-truck by the North Charleston Police Department, and no arrests is made. Instead of providing justice and protect, protection, officers laughed and make a mockery of the situation, filing a false police report, committing obstruction, and tampering with video evidence simply because of the hue or the color of a person's skin, and finding satisfaction through racism. Would you feel safe? Would you be, feel respected? Would you feel that our community, our laws, our leaders genuinely protect you and your loved ones? I think not. It is our responsibility as leaders and citizens alike to demand that our laws are applied uniformly and that our moral compass guides our action. Accountability and transparency must be our victors in the struggle against these societal maladies, which is struggles. We must take a stand against racism and nepotism, not only because they are wrong, but because they erode the trust necessary for unity within our community. We must challenge each other to foster a culture- and finding satisfaction through racism. Would you feel safe? Would you be, feel respected? Would you feel that our community, our laws, our leaders genuinely protect you and your loved ones? I think not. It is our responsibility as leaders and citizens alike to demand that our laws are applied uniformly and that our moral compass guides our action. Accountability and transparency must be our victors in the struggle against these societal maladies, which is struggles. We must take a stand against racism and nepotism, not only because they are wrong, but because they erode the trust necessary for unity within our community. We must challenge each other to foster a culture where integrity prevails, where every citizen is treated fairly, and where no one is above the law. As council members and stewards of this community, I implore you, reflect on our commitment to integrity and your role in ensuring that our laws uphold the values we cherish.
Time.
I think, can you allow me to finish, please, Mayor?
How long you have?
Just maybe another minute, and I'm done.
Okay, I'll let you do that.
I appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead.
Let us support policies that encourage accountability and let us create pathway to transparency that expose and eliminate the shadows where corruption and injustice thrive. Together, we can build the trust that is crucial, critical and crucial for unified North Charleston, where every individual feels valued and safe, no matter their background, the time for change is now. Let us be the champions of integrity, defenders of justices, and the guardians of unity in our beloved community. So I say to you, Mayor Burgess, what type of sacrifice are you willing to make? Abraham was willing to sacrifice his son, but God provided a ram in the bush. And I say to you, don't ambush your ram in the bush for others. The journey that God had you on isn't meant for everybody, especially if you have to sacrifice your integrity for others. And with that being said, good night to each and every one of you, gentlemen.
One thing, and you can leave after this.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a correction, or maybe I got it wrong.
Okay.
Okay, you stated that you were hit by a North Charleston vehicle.
No, sir.
Okay.
That's not what I stated.
Okay.
I stated that North Charleston Police Department came to the scene.
Right.
The truck that hit me already left the scene.
All right.
They were called back to the scene by North Charleston Police Department.
Right.
You saw it, I saw it.
Exactly.
The legal counsel saw it, your ombudsman saw it.
Yeah.
Whereas, while we were sitting there, the witness stated inside the video that we were waiting. Not that I exited the truck, there's no sign of me jumping on top of the truck, as written in the police report. And I'm asking you
Yeah.
to do what is right as mayor. Don't, don't, don't allow your judgment to be for some, allow it to be for all.
We got it, we got it.
And that's where I'm at today.
All right, well, Major Aiken is back there, the same one that worked on the case, and we'll give you update on it. We actually, we went to the judge, and he kind of told us some things, so we were going to contact you anyway. But we got you, we got you. I just didn't want to make sure that it, folks would know that it wasn't any wild vehicles that hit you. That's all I wanted to make sure.
No, 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 it wasn't your vehicle.
All right, cool, thank you, thank you, sir.
But your officers then arrest anyone for the vehicle that left the scene of the accident and came back once, called them back to the scene.
Yes, sir.
But that, my voice must be heard.
Yes, sir.
Sir?
Thank you.
Mr. Gilyard?
Here you are.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Minister Gilyard, Roger Gilyard, forty-three thirty-eight Purdue Drive, North Charleston, South Carolina, two-nine-four-one-eight.
Thank you.
We're going to call you now, okay?
I'll be glad if you call. The only thing I want is what has been done wrong to me to be made right.
Okay, all right.
Monica Mummy?
I am Monica Mummy, twenty-four sixty-six Vestavia Road, North Charleston, two-nine-four-oh-six. I would like to introduce the rest of my community that came and support tonight of Mr. Potter in the shooting on Bordeaux Court. I'm here to address that shooting that occurred in my neighborhood over a month ago. Mr. Potter and I were here at the last meeting and shared our concerns. We've been told it would be addressed, and it has not. We were told cameras would go up by Monday. Monday has come and gone, and we still don't have any cameras. I was told today that they were going to be up today. I actually went out there before coming in, that's why I look like this. I came straight from work and took pictures of the pole that the camera's supposed to go up on, and I have a picture of a pole with no cameras. If anybody wants to see them when I'm done, I'll be glad to show you the blank pole. I have, I have been told that there are delays. Well, this is over a month old. If the city would pay CPI, CPI would have had cameras out in forty-eight hours. So over a month is a bit extensive for a timeframe when there's been a shooting in a quiet residential neighborhood. The police have evidently been making more rounds than we're aware of, but we were, we were told that they would be making more trips through this area. We don't have that on our cameras. This is hard because there was a four-year-old that could have been shot in this incident, and it makes both Mr. Potter and myself kind of shake with anger. And it kind of makes me wonder, who is the city protecting? We have an obviously suspicious home that has obviously bizarre behavior going on, where they have people sitting in cars, watching what's going on, and looking for any kind of people coming up to approach them. I walk my dog, they now have two big dogs in the backyard that act as watchdogs. As soon as you come by pedestrian or vehicle, they alert. It's easy to train a big dog to alert. I mean, this is like a huge rottweiler and another big dog. We had patrols at Halloween. I never saw him go down Bordeaux. I've been making this an effort of my own to be there to look for these things. Walk my dog forty-five minutes, three miles every day. There, I was passed three times by a police officer on Wednesday. Never once did I see anybody go down Bordeaux. The white car involved in the shooting has been back on the scene. The five males that jumped the fence on Bill's property have been back at the scene. If this camera was up, you would have proof with license plates and these five men jumping over fences, through privacy fences, and into private properties. We would not still be worried about our children and our community members being shot up. These people had a rifle, whether it was an AR or whether it was a rifle with a modifier on it. It was able to rapid-fire over twenty rounds, to the point where I couldn't speak last time I was here because I listened to that gunfire again, and it was so distressing. And you guys know, it's hard to make me shut up, but I couldn't follow my chain of command. Delays are not a legitimate excuse, and I really don't feel like coming from the chief that that's the right thing to be telling us at this point. The duty officer told us if we wanted to have police available, we would have to pay an off-duty police officer to be present. And then he said, well, that's, they shouldn't have said that. Well, that woman, that duty officer, was speaking truth. Because if we really wanted a police officer in the area, we would have to pay an off-duty police officer, despite us all paying taxes and providing your salaries and their salaries. We just want to be kept safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Justin Buford.
I have a copy of an email that I would like to give to everyone up there, if I can walk up there.
Name and address, please.
Dr. Justin Buford, thirty-nine forty-five Rivers Avenue, North Charleston, South Carolina, two-nine-four-zero-five. I'm Dr. Justin Buford, a graduate of North Charleston High School and still a North Charleston citizen still to this day. Last time I stood inside this spot, I was receiving a proclamation for my own day back inside two thousand eighteen, which is the fourth Saturday in June every year called Be Yourself Day. I was made aware of an email that was sent out to several principals that I feel defamed my company's name. Each of you have been given a copy of the section of the email referencing High Star Hoops. The North Charleston Rec Department established a middle school basketball league approximately five years that included three schools, Morningside Middle, Northwoods Middle, and Jerry Zucker. This puts out kids at a disadvantage, continuously playing the same kids. In my dissertation entitled Exploring Alternatives for Low Socioeconomic Student Athletes, that study was conducted specifically in North Charleston. It depicts this demographic needs explosion more than anything. It was introduced to me to help combine our league with the rec program league. I chose to do so knowing that our company would suffer financially, but it would create more exposure for our kids. This email was sent to principals that we brought to your league. I feel this email painted a, painted a stereotype that gives a negative connotation to our company when we elevated a weakened program. For example, we took that same middle school league from six teams to twenty-four teams. We brought those eighteen teams. Another example, we collaborated and conducted a free clinic with my name on it. In April of this year, over a hundred and twenty kids showed up. Another clinic, free clinic, was conducted a month later. Another, another clinic was conducted a month later, less than ten kids showed up. We are an asset to this community. As you know, there's no football program, there's no recreation football program because of the community, the community and departments disconnect. This is unheard of inside any other city. I believe Charleston would be the standard for other cities to follow. Basketball is headed in that same direction, and we've tried to collaborate. Our athletic program lacks familiarity with the history of our community and where our community is going. I'm a proud product of Helen Geets. I've, I've established relationships across the Tri-County area because I played basketball in Stair Hall, Northwoods, Ferndale, Danny Jones, the outside courts such as Dees Hill, Union Heights, North Park Village, up to Pippa Hill. The reason why I'm saddened is because as a black man, that's all I have is my reputation and my name, and I can't afford implicit bias. I wanted to let you know that it hurts. I believe to be important to this community, and I was devalued. I take this email as the highest level of unprofessionalism, unprofessionalism in comparison to my contributions to the city. Can I please continue? I have a few more questions, have questions that don't necessarily have to be answered, but these, this is what I like to say to the board. Why are we dividing and the goal is to come together? Two, can we immediately retract this email? And can we receive a public apology for mentioning our name in a negative connotation, insinuating we do not have great working relationships with these, with these middle schools? And we currently have sixteen middle schools returning back to our league in this December. For the record, I applied for a position to be a part of the Recreation, Recreation Department because I felt that all three of my degrees supplement the population that we are trying to serve. I was interviewed, never heard anything back. As I conclude, I leave you with a quote by Albert Einstein that sticks out to me in reference to our city. God doesn't play with dice.
I'm Justin, before you leave, thank you. The second thing you asked for was the retraction of this.
Yes, sir.
Tom Curran, current, whoever this, this is not our athletic director. I have not chosen an athletic director. What we have right now is two deputy directors. Yeah, Tom Curran from Hannah Hand, well, he, he doesn't, he doesn't represent the city of North Charleston. And I'll say this to you too, young, young man. My great-grandmother, who was born in eighteen ninety, said this, hint to the wise and sufficient, don't let this rhetoric stop you from trying to change lives. Don't let this rhetoric, see, these things happen to try to derail you from doing the work that you've done. I've been in your life a long time, and your brother, I know what you're trying to do, I know what you have done, and we know that. So continue to keep moving on and doing what you need to do to improve the quality of life for all young kids, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Ronald Smith.
Ronald Smith, thirty-four forty, Apichy Street, North Charleston.
Yeah.
I'm coming to you all today because I wanted to put something in front of you all ahead of time. Positive vibes, having a Thanksgiving giveaway on next Saturday. And I would love to invite you all out to be able to come out. I will pass these flyers to Courtney, she can put it in each one of you boxes. We also have a MLK luncheon that's going to be in January. It's all about bringing MLK back, you know what I mean, about bringing the people together. This is our second one. Last year was very successful. We looking for this year to be successful again, and we talking about bringing everyone together. Next thing is our MLK parade. For the last two years, we had it on the south side. This year, it will be coming from the Coliseum and going to the CCSD Stadium. And it also will be, we are putting together to be a nice show, after-show there. So I'd love to invite you all out to be able to show your presence and to be able to announce your names. This is something that we're trying to do, continue to do, to bring everyone together, to unite. This is a hard fight. Left today from the State House, and we were talking about juvenile crimes. Our city is hitting juvenile crimes hard also. I fight every day for our juveniles. I have a program that meets every Monday. A partnership with Department of Juvenile Justice. So we fight all around helping juveniles to succeed. But what I have seen about juveniles is their motions. Once their motions get ahead of them, you can't control it. And when they can't control it, that's when gun violence kick. And I know that we all are hearing gun violence, I hear what they're saying. We also are certified violence interrupters. I still fight in the community the same way since I lost my daughter four years ago. And that case have slapped me in the face, but you know what? It keep on making me push harder. You know, sometimes we don't get what we want, but we have to try to figure out better ways. And I like that the State House recognized us today for the fight that we are doing. You know, someone kind of recognized that the fight we are doing in this city, people are seeing it. And all I ask is that the city council, y'all see the same thing that we are doing. And also, next thing is getting very cold out there. Looking at people sleeping in the cold again. It makes me angry because I understand, and I slept in the cold before. And the weather that hit the other night was too cold, and no shelters was open. Feel that we need to do something better for the city and trying to put something together for those people that are sleeping on the streets. Because unless we gonna have people, just freeze to death. So I'm here to say, thank you all for the work that y'all are doing so far. Let's continue to push the needle, let's continue to make this city different. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, any other business that come before the body?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to update council real quick. Darvis and the building team and myself, we met at Tunnel to Towers yesterday, and they gave us a walkthrough. It's really going to be nice. It's actually up to ninety-three rooms now. Some are one-bedroom studios, small, small, medium, and large, I mean, they have a penthouse in there, okay? But each floor has its own lounge and its own caseworker, which I thought was really nice. But Mr. Somos said he would be happy to come back down from New York and let council come back anytime they want to.
Great. Another thing that Councilwoman Jerome did, she got us connected with Columbia. We took a road trip to Columbia. They have a shelter for homeless. How is designed, they actually, they build many houses. And they have inside like a gymnasium, on one side of the gymnasium, they have about twenty to thirty-nine beds. And then another side, they have about sixty beds. And this is outside of the many, the many houses. And what happens is this, now, hear me out before you automatically think it doesn't work. What happens is that they have, they have a bus line that's dedicated to the five points to where the General Assembly's at and all that downtown. What they do, that bus takes all the homeless people that actually are registered and bring them back to off-site. Let's say, let's say we have an off-site near the neck area. Just saying, it's someplace is huge that we can develop. All the folks that are homeless that's in the northern part of the city, central part of the city, and southern part, we get on our bus and go there. The men would sleep on the left side of the building, which they have twenty-four-hour security. They have an individual bed, and the women would sleep on the right side, and they have individual beds too. They don't meet each other. Well, outside of it, they have small mini homes that are built, that are, they're very awesome. This the thing that we had to question. What happens is they have to be in by ten, really nine-thirty at night. But in the morning, they get back on the bus, they go back to the city. Don't, don't get upset, don't think, well, it's, it's not productive. But what happens is this, because they know that they have to come back to that living quarter. They get fed there, they have showers, they have wraparound services. They must come back to that place. Therefore, when the people in Columbia get ready to go out to eat at night, to entertain- Therefore, when the people in Columbia get ready to go out to eat at night, to entertain, to have, look at a basketball game or whatever, the homeless people are going back to the shelters. We really thought, and Councilwoman Jerome, I don't know how you found that, but that was nice. Because they recognize that if we have a place for them to go, and they know they have rules and regulations, they will go. And the people who were socialized in that outdoor life where they can get a meal or go to a movie, they won't have to intermingle with people who basically rather be with themselves than with the populous community. Yeah. Thank you for, you know, getting us there. It was awesome.
I just have a brief statement, Mr. Mayor. In reference to the town hall meeting that occurred a few weeks ago, there was a lot of talk and rhetoric on social media and in other platforms with regards to council members not being in attendance. First, let me state that I was not in attendance because I was not invited, nor was I made aware of the town hall meeting. And proper decorum is that if you do not receive confirmation of attendance, never reserve seating. So please never put a reserved sign for me if you've not received confirmation. Thank you.
Alright, good point there. Let's go back to history now. When Chief DuMalt was here, he had what we call meetings with the community. And those meetings were at the end of the year, and they talked about the crime in the city of North Charleston. The reason why he created that, because in 2000, between four, in 2007, we were number seven in the nation, number seven in the nation for violent crime. He got with all the leaders, and we started meeting, and then we had a summit at the end of the year because of the violent crime. You're right, Councilwoman. Then, when Chief Dreggers became the chief, he started having meetings as well that was based off the Walter Scott shooting. History, folks. Then, in 2019, I asked for a racial bias audit. That's when I started having my summits to talk about violent crime in our community. So she's right. We've normally not ever invited a councilperson unless they want to come on their own. We're inviting the citizens to be there to talk about the issues that they either feel needed to be addressed inside the communities or with the law enforcement. And you're right, that's why I was never, none of the councilwomen, councilpeople was ever asked to come. If they wanted to, they could, but it was a law enforcement and community function. So that's, you're 100% right. 100% right. Anything else to come before the body? Other than that, this meeting is adjourned.